We will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, June 20, 2016. I ask that you all please rise for a brief invitation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets in regular session, we are ever mindful of the numerous tragedies and upsetting occasions that have occurred in our world around us over the last several weeks since we last met. We just hope that blessings are showered upon those who are directly impacted by the tragedies that our country has experienced and knowing that we are here for everyone to try to make this a better country. All the circumstances that we see before us allow us to again have grand appreciation in our hearts and our minds for the valuable services that are provided us by the men and women who so ably serve us throughout our country and specifically here in Batavia under our public safety departments. They work under great peril with great challenges and we are ever thankful that so many highly talented individuals are willing and ready and able to step forward in service in such a noble and able profession. So tonight, we just want to express our appreciation for all those willing to serve and ask that a special blessing be showered on each and every one of them throughout our country as they go about their vital mission of protecting us in times of danger and emergency. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them and all those serving with them who are serving so ably in the defense of the United States of America. We also want to remember those from our community who are sick and infirm and ask that a special blessing be showered upon them as they hopefully revitalize themselves and recover to good health. Tonight, we also ask for direction and guidance as we act on the various items of business before us, knowing as we always do that each of us is here tonight to do what in our own best interests of heart and mind we find to do what we have to to make this a better community for today and in the future. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Rosado, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with clergy and justice for all.
The City Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
ATAC.
Here.
Starb.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien is absent. Callahan.
Here.
Homan.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Bodderman.
Here.
Alderman Serrone is absent. McFadden.
Here.
So let the record reflect that the 12 of the 14 elected Aldermen are present in the counterforce. We obviously have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman ATAC is governmental services chairman. Do you have anything?
No, I do not, Your Honor.
Okay. Moving then to item number five, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman ATAC.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place on file historic preservation minutes for May 9th and May 23rd, 2016. Plan commission meetings and/or zoning board of appeals for May 4th, 2016. May 2016 building report. Community of the home minutes for May 10th, 2016. Approvals June 17th, 2016 payroll in the amount of $761,297.61. Accounts payable check register $3,684,809.96. City council minutes for May 16th and June 16th, 2016. Resolution 16-55-R request a permit from IDOT for the Route 31 road closure for the July 4th, 2016 fireworks display special event. Approval of the fireworks permit for the Batavia Fireworks Committee. Resolution 16-56-R request a permit from IDOT for road closures for the 2016 Half Marathon. I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Move Alderman ATAC, second of Alderman McFadden for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
ATAC.
Aye.
Starb.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Bodderman.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. 12 yes, no, noes, 2 absent. Okay, moving to item number nine is, or excuse me, item number six, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Does anybody in the audience wish to address this for something that's not on the agenda? All right. Moving then to item number seven, I'll ask Chief Dyke if he would come forward and introduce the swearing in and oath of office to the paid-on-call recruits.
Good evening. I have four new paid-on-call to swear in tonight, so if Randy, Aaron, Corey, and Anthony could come forward, please. All right. Randy Banker Jr., raise your hand, Randy, so they know who you are. He lives in Batavia. He's a U.S. Army veteran. He is a basic operations firefighter. Aaron Bolton, he lives in St. Charles. He's a basic operations firefighter. Corey Hogan, lives in Carol Stream. He has an associate's degree in fire science and is a basic operations firefighter. And Anthony Stazoni, he lives in Geneva, has a bachelor's degree and a master's degree from Northern Illinois University. He's a basic operations firefighter and a paramedic. So they're to be sworn in today. Okay, gentlemen, I need to have you come up here and turn around and face the audience because we've got to get you on camera for TV here. But all raise your right hands and we see after me. I state your name.
Aye.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of paid-on-call recruit.
To the position of paid-on-call recruit.
With the KGB Fire Department.
With the KGB Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and Page.
The counties of Kane and Page.
Who solemnly swear.
Who solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I am basically discharged of duties.
And I am basically discharged of duties.
Of the position of paid-on-call recruit.
Of the position of paid-on-call recruit.
With the KGB Fire Department.
With the KGB Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you, guys. Stay safe and well played, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
There goes the audience. And how much spend $4 million dollars on here?
Okay, we will move to item number eight on the agenda, which is the Main Street Minute. And we have a new spokesman tonight. Would you introduce yourself for it?
Just to reintroduce myself, I'm Luke Freiburger. I'm the newest intern for Batavia Main Street. So the first item that we have to address is the value of our volunteers and how important they are to our mission. We've had 132 volunteers so far who have done 243 hours of planning. These include cocktails in the park, Green Fair on the Fox, Batavia House Walk, and Oktoberfest, which is supposed to be one of the biggest and best in the area. And then we've also had the huge success of the Blues on Water Street event that featured Toronto Cannon, who's a well-known Chicago Blues artist, and we sold out with over 300 tickets very quickly, actually. The farmer's market is a huge part of my job and the newest expansion of the farmer's market has been the SNAP and LINK or food stamped acceptance program. And so we've gotten it off the ground. We just got a new grant, two-for-one value, so every dollar they spend, they get $2 back. But it's been slow so far with $200 of LINK card purchases over the first three markets. And just as a reminder, Jamie would like to remind everyone that the newest favorite Michigan fruit marketer, or fruit vendor will be coming soon in July. And then we also hosted the annual meeting for all the downtown businesses. We had great attendance and a lot of first-time names, so a lot of people were involved in there. And we appointed four new members of our executive board, and I'm just going to go off and name those very quickly. President Patrick Moynihan, Vice President Dave Karas, Treasurer Bob Hanson, Secretary Marissa Boyce, Past President Kurt Hagelmann, Kyle, sorry if I mispronounce this, Hoymen, a city council member, Chris Aiston, Chris Cudworth will be the Water Street resident, John Hamill will be the Pal Joey's resident, Heather Cochin resident, Jeff Matters of Music Matters, and Amy Moore, who's the resident bike commissioner. And then the last item that we will talk about is the cocktails in the park. Just a reminder that we are hosting this and this is the major fundraiser that allowed us all to exist. We're still selling tickets. That's again on Saturday, July 16th at 7:00 PM at Appleton Park, just outside of here. There'll be live music, food, drinks, fun. There's $25 tickets for pre-orders and $30 of the day of sales. I know we all gave you tickets, but if you could help sell them and get the word out, that would be much appreciated. We'll only be selling 400 tickets, so make sure you purchase soon. We're getting a great reception for this. Contact any of us or the Batavia Main Street webpage. New this year, we are selling $50 raffle tickets that include our entry to the event along with 1 in 200, chanced win $2,500, so pretty strong odds. And then we are always looking for new committee members and volunteers, so make sure you sign up and help Batavia Main Street.
Any questions in Main Street tonight? I would just like to make, offer the, you know, the opinion that I've had the opportunity in the last, I think, three Saturday morning farmer's markets that you've had to take a stroll through and maybe pick up a couple items, but I am just very, very impressed, number one, with how well it's being run. And secondly, by what I see is it seems to be the growing crowd of attendees that you're getting on Saturday morning is more and more people seem to hear about this. I think a lot of it is more of a word-of-mouth spread where somebody goes and has a good experience, so then they tell somebody else and so they're showing up. It's amazing to me, the number of people who park over here on this side of the river around the city and then they hike across the bridge and do their shopping and then come back across the bridge and get their car and go on their way. So we really are making good use of our river frontage and our river facilities and I'm just very pleased with the kind of the upscale swing of that whole event. That really has turned into quite an attention-getter and a attendee for people to visit downtown Batavia and find out what we're all about. So thanks to Main Street for what you've done, a terrific job in putting that together.
Thank you. I will also like to add that the Artisan Collective, which is on the third Saturday of every month, has been a major benefactor of getting a huge draw to it and people coming. Or we have another 12 to 15 vendors that come and sell non-food items and that's been a huge draw in making this a successful program. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, moving to item number nine, as I have an appointment that I would ask the City Council to confirm, and that is for Chris Simkins, who is sitting right here next to Holly. I would like to nominate her and ask for your confirmation of my nomination to be the interim City Clerk. And the idea is, is that with Heidi's resignation and her move to Michigan, it seems to be imminent, Chris would step in and the kind of the beauty of Chris coming in to do this is that Chris is already a full-time employee with the city in the billing department, so she's right in the hallway. And the City Clerk over the next few months is going to be kind of a busy place because first, we're going to be, again, I believe, a precinct for the general election in November. So you get a lot of people straggling in here wanting to ask some question of the clerk and whatever. So Chris will be sitting here doing her normal business, so we're going to put a bail on her if somebody needs to have a question answered because we always start getting arguments about, "Well, what do you mean I can't vote?" Or, "What do you mean I'm not registered?" Or whatever. So she'll know the number to call at least to get me out of trouble, if nothing else. And then in the, right after the, near the end of the year, we'll be putting out the petitions for the election for next April for the city offices and it'll be good to have the City Clerk right in the building during that when the people come in to pick up a petition and whatever, or again, answer any questions or disseminate any information. So we're kind of asking our friends in the utility billing to share one of their good employees with us to do this, and Chris has stepped forward and is willing to volunteer and see what this is all about. Now, I wanted to just tell you that she is a time-tested veteran of some really challenging circumstances that we encounter in utility billing on an ongoing basis because we have some folks come in there that really have some, some really challenging situations before them and it never ceases to amaze me, the latest chapter and verse of whatever it is about whatever somebody's doing and including the people that want to mail their mailboxes shut so that we can't deliver bills to them. So we have, and our staff, I want to tell you, has overcome that problem, so they're way ahead of the game here. So Chris is a veteran tested in the battlefield with a number of these folks and I'm very, very pleased that she's willing to do this. So I would ask for your confirmation of my appointment of Chris Simkins to act as Deputy City Clerk until May of 2017. So move. Second. Move by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Bodderman. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Starb.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Bodderman.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
That is approved by a vote of 12 yes, no noes, 2 absent. So Chris, welcome aboard and thank you for volunteering. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is item 10, which is going to be a presentation of Walk Your City program by Abby Beck.
Hi, Mayor. I just wanted to let the, yourself and the council and the audience know that Abby is a member of our Environmental Commission and we are really pleased to have her contact Public Works with the idea that she'll present. And I think you'll find that it's going to occupy a place that's perfect for us right now since we're looking at the wayfinding and the branding, which may take a few months and I think you'll be interested in what Abby has to say, so Abby?
Welcome. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm back up here. Started in the middle. There we go. Yes, thank you so much for letting me present to you guys tonight and a thank you to Gary Holmes, too. I know he's not here, but he has been a tremendous support and facilitator of this project so far in getting it off the ground, so a thank you to Gary. I'm Abby Beck. I was born and raised here in Batavia and have, was recently appointed to the Batavia Environmental Commission, so thank you very much for that appointment. And I'm here on behalf of the BEC to tell you about a little project called Walk Batavia. And if there's time at the end, I snuck in a slide about another campaign that I'd love to tell you about if time permits, so let me know. So the BEC has been working on this campaign through an organization called Walk Your City. They help groups like us create temporary wayfinding signage to boost a city's walkability. And wayfinding and walkability, as I know you know, these campaigns, they accomplish a lot. They boost urban discovery, they get more people downtown supporting local businesses, and, and they just build social capital as more and more people are out on the streets and sidewalks interacting, the whole city benefits. So from the BEC's perspective, we also want to see a move towards more sustainable transportation and get more of those short trips that people make on their, in their car to be done on sidewalk or on their bikes. And so in these discussions, I keep coming back to this study a lot that Smart Go with America reports, that 50% of all trips are about three miles or less and 28% of trips are one mile or less. And yet 60% of those one-mile trips are often made by, are made by automobile. And so we're trying to capture some of those shorter trips and get people walking and biking around town rather than driving. I love Batavia. Batavia is still a very small town to me and there are so many downtown amenities and so many things you can accomplish on foot rather than driving. And when we moved back here four years ago, we sold a car that we didn't think would make the trip and just haven't gotten around to buying a second car. And now we, here we are four years later, a family of four, and we live out in the burbs with only one car, which most of my friends think is kind of nuts, but I find to be very, very doable. And so I'd like to encourage more people to, to find the same great walkability in downtown Batavia. So here's a closer look at what the signs look like. What's nice is that they list the distance in minutes rather than some other unit of measurement, so it's much easier to compare your transit time to what it would be if you were driving. So the other great thing about these signs is that QR code in the corner, which if a walker goes by and scans, it'll pull up a website with information about our campaign, about the BEC, about the destination listed on the sign, and then step-by-step directions accompanied by the map that you see there. And then on our end, we can see that empty graph there will hopefully not be empty for long, but rather show us how many scans on that sign have been made and when they were So we've been really lucky to receive enough sponsorships to purchase 22 signs and these will hopefully be up within the next week and a half. I'm also hoping to get a few more signs printed this summer from other downtown businesses that I wasn't able to nail down in the, in the timeframe here. They will largely be in the neighborhoods just outside of downtown, all pointing in with the exception of a few pointing to outlying parks from the Park District. And again, we're trying to capture a few of those people that are driving by and don't realize just how close everything is. And here is some resources. If you want to see more, walkyourcity.org is great and this great organization has a number of case studies and videos about other implementations of this program. And then once our program goes live, we will also have a public site that we will blast out and on social media, you'll see the same map that I just showed you of where all the signs are and what they say, my contact information, and then all of our wonderful sponsors that have supported us so far. And if I could, does anyone have any questions on Walk Your City? And do I have one more minute that I could introduce one more quick thing?
Sure.
Okay, wonderful. So like I said, I'm on the Batavia Environmental Commission and we have this Change One Campaign for a Greener Batavia coming up as well. The purpose of this awareness campaign is to motivate people to make small changes towards sustainability and inform them that no change is too small to have an impact because if everybody made one small change, multiplied across an entire city's worth of people, that makes a big change and has a great impact on our planet. And we want people to, to commit to making those small changes. Change One is also going to be the theme of the Green Fair on the Fox taking place here, August 13th, and so this is also a promotional piece to help get people down to the fair. And so how we'd like to use it is this will actually be an example of kind of a whiteboard poster and we'll be soliciting prominent businesses and Batavians such as yourself to maybe perhaps make a 2016 commitment of some small thing. Swap out a water bottle, a light bulb, walk to work once a week to write that commitment and pose for a picture in just a social media campaign. Luke from Main Street has agreed to help me and so we will be reaching out to businesses and people like yourself this week to see if we can get any, any photos and any commitments. It's not going to be something we hold your feet to the fire, we're not going to be checking out on you or anything like that. Obviously, we hope everybody takes it very seriously, but it's just an awareness thing to get the Batavia Environmental Commission's name out there a little bit more to let people know that we are a resource and, and we hope to be here a lot more as well in a more very real and meaningful way in helping the city in any way that we can in, in the coming years. And so I'm very excited to be a part of it and wanted to thank you again for that and we'll give you any, answer any questions if you have anything on either campaign.
You have, you have a date yet for the sign program of when it's going to kind of...
Pressing print tonight. Was nervous to do so before coming here and making you all aware, so they say it turns around in about four days, so I should have them by next week and we'll, we'll be installing them the day I get them.
And, you know, just, we have a whole bunch of people watching this on TV, so your other event that you're looking for, the green movement, and you want to give us that date and the time and is there a location that things are going to be centered around?
Green Fair on the Fox, the Batavia Main Street program, is here and outside on the lawn, August 13th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Looking to have probably about 60 to 70 vendors ranging from all sorts of environmental issues. There will be live music, live Zumba classes, a small demo stage where different vendors will get up and tell the, tell the, tell the attendees how to preserve herbs and how to meditate and all, you know, a whole wide range of things. So we're hoping that everybody that comes leaves inspired to change one thing that they learned while at the Green Fair and there'll be an opportunity, a little art display, displaying some of those change commitments at the fair as well.
Okay. Anybody in the council have any other questions?
Can you say again how long the walking program will last?
Yes, so the signs themselves, according to walkyourcity.org, will last 18 to 36 months in the elements. However, when we discussed with Public Works and with the city, they indicated they'd rather have the signs up seasonally, so we would probably bring them down for fall colder weather and then keep them and if it's, if it's successful, then bring them back next year, you know, depending on whatever wayfinding progress is made elsewhere, but it seemed like a good stepping stone to that discussion as well. So I'm willing to print them and leave them up for as long as I'm allowed. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Abby, for coming down and...
Thank you very much.
Look forward to all your activities you're putting forth.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Moving to item number 11, which is resolution 16-53-R approving written lease for two East Wilson Street, the Tomley Building.
I have that, yes. This is a new lease for the Tomley Building and the leaseee is Fawn Gifts Bree Hayes. And Fawn Gifts works to foster a community of support and comfort through empathy and self-care. We seek your approval to debut with a retail location in the Tomley Building on Wilson Street in mid-August. We are eager to play an active role in supporting our city and engaging its citizens. Our conversations with local community members and business owners have confirmed that we offer a unique perspective that will complement future downtown businesses and development. The Wilson Street level streetfront space will function as a retail shop, offering for purchase unique lines of greeting cards, bath products, candles, journals, books, plants, and accessories, items that can be purchased either à la carte or with gift boxes. And the second floor will be more of a meeting place. The lease itself is for a year and they're going to be paying 600 a month or 7,200 a year and the tenant will be responsible for all utility costs and sales tax and the city will be responsible, if needed, for any real estate taxes. Are there any questions?
You know, I think as long as we have the applicant here, it would be nice if she could take a couple minutes and just give us a more detailed picture of her ideas and her business. I hope that, you know, this gets shared on TV, so maybe you pick up a few customers and give yourself a little chance to explain the great idea you're bringing to our downtown.
Sounds great. All right. So, Fawn Gifts, we strive to be a nationally recognized leader in conversations and point of purchase around empathy and self-care. That has to start somewhere. Obviously, we're not going to be a national recognized leader tomorrow. What we love about being headquartered in downtown Batavia, it is our home and we would like to start with a brick-and-mortar store. It gives us a chance to be able to get to know our vendors and wholesalers, have relationships with them, make sure the products that we want, when you go on a larger level on an online type forum, that we really have, we have what we like and that we also have built that community in Batavia and with, within the, the community that we can kind of, you know, reach out and see and have like face-to-face conversations with. We will also be building up a web presence both within the Batavia community and then hoping to stretch that on a national level before we go nationally with any kind of product. So the services of the retail store, we're going to focus on personal care, so someone coming in that wants to buy a product for self-indulgent purposes, but really thinking of it more as self-compassion and the ability to treat yourself to something nice. Also, really focusing on thoughtful and compassionate gifts. So when someone's going through a hard time, we've got easily paired items like tea and coffee and a nice mug, a nice bath set, something like that that you can give to someone who might need some extra support. And the third service is private... Fawn Gifts, we strive to be a nationally recognized leader in conversations and point of purchase around empathy and self-care. That has to start somewhere. Obviously, we're not going to be a national recognized leader tomorrow. What we love about being headquartered in downtown Batavia, it is our home, and we would like to start with a brick-and-mortar store. It gives us a chance to be able to get to know our vendors and wholesalers, have relationships with them, make sure the products that we want, when you go on a larger level and an online type forum, that we really have, we have what we like, and that we also have built that community in Batavia and with, within the community that we can kind of, you know, reach out and see and have like face-to-face conversations with. We will also be building up a web presence both within the Batavia community and then hoping to stretch that on a national level before we go nationally with any kind of product. So the services of the retail store, we're going to focus on personal care, so someone coming in that wants to buy a product for self-indulgent purposes, but really thinking of it more as self-compassion and the ability to treat yourself to something nice. Also, really focusing on thoughtful and compassionate gifts. So when someone's going through a hard time, we've got easily paired items like tea and coffee and a nice mug, a nice bath set, something like that that you can give to someone who might need some extra support. And the third service is private clients, so looking at hopefully people who are having weddings and want some sort of welcome bag or treats to take away from their wedding, as well as working with businesses for giving around the holidays and other celebrations. So the products will go from homewares, glassware, key towels, things like that, to stationery and cards done by small presses, bath and body, soaps, lotions, things like that. We'll have a book series, and then also pair that with community events like book clubs, things like that. And then also handmade pottery. We hope to work with some makers in Batavia that are also, that are already making nice candles, things like that, and then also bring lines in that can't be found other places in the area. So with your approval, we'll continue to move forward on our, working on our brand identity and marketing. We're ready to launch our website, our Facebook page, all of our social media as soon as we know that we have the building. We'll continue to work with vendors to get our products and build out the store. We won't be doing any major building. It's in really great shape, and it's a beautiful space for us, just some cosmetic work. And then we hope to have our grand opening in late August. And I'm happy to open this up for questions if anybody has any comments, questions.
Any questions or comments? Alderman Callahan?
I'm really excited for you because I've gotten to know you since you moved here, and I think you and James embody what it's like to really live in a community and want to be a part of it outside of just the work and the retail side of it, but what you do with your community service and how you remain active in it. And I think that this is going to pay dividends, is kind of karma back to you, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, I certainly would concur with what Alderman Callahan just said. I mean, you've got an idea here that seems to want to kind of play to the best instincts of people's human spirits of goodness and supporting one another, and I appreciate that sentiment kind of being brought to a presence in downtown Batavia. I think there's a lot of nice things that could be done, and this certainly is one of them. And I think you bring a new brighter spot to our downtown for what you are trying to do here, and hopefully it'll catch on and be very successful. One last thing I guess maybe we should do is have you emphasize again, you know, maybe your hours of operation, are you open every day? And do you have a website address and telephone number and how somebody could call and ask you questions or...
You can go to fongifts.com right now, and you can sign up for our newsletter, which we will show some of the progress over the summer and then have everything about our opening. The plan right now is to be closed on Mondays and open the rest of the week with actually having hours into the evening around seven or eight, so people coming back from work is an easy stopover. So probably about 10 to 7, 10 to 8 during the week. You can also like us on Facebook, just search Fawn Gifts.
Okay. Well, I wanted to get that out there so everybody that's watching on TV could pick up on it too, so. All right, well, we wish you many years of business growth and success in our downtown, and thanks for choosing Batavia and becoming part of, hopefully, a very vibrant downtown in the days ahead.
Thank you, we're happy to be here.
All right, moving then to...
Should we approve the lease?
Oh, you got to have, we got to have the resolution, okay.
I move that we approve the lease for two East West Wilson Street with Fawn Gifts Freehaze proprietor for a year at $600 a month.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Callahan for the approval of the lease for $600 a month for two East Wilson Street. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Star?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Euler?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusada?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no no's, two absent, so welcome aboard. All right, and then we move to item number 12, which is waiver of liquor fee for the Batavia Park District's Windmill City Fest, and we...
So moved.
We did, we approved the license last time, and I dropped the ball and didn't say that we wanted to waive the fee, so this is on me, so I just...
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman McFadden that we further waive the fee for the Batavia Park District's Windmill City Fest for the liquor license. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Star?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Euler?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusada?
Aye.
Okay, moving to item number 13, Resolution 16-54-R, authorizing execution of a franchise agreement for cable television with Comcast of California, Colorado, Illinois, Indiana, and Michigan. Who's got this one?
I do. Okay, this is the long-awaited franchise agreement with Comcast and the city. It's a 10-year agreement and continues the statutory 5% franchise. There is a difference in how the peg fee is paid. Instead of being paid quarterly, it's going to be paid monthly per the customer and appear on customers' bills. It does not affect the total cost paid, it's just a different way of billing. And then there's one new addition we added since the COW meeting when we approved this. The word reasonable was added to the description of any peg capital plan proposed for the, by the city from time to time. So are there any, no questions?
Just a comment.
Yes.
As the representative of the council on BATV, this has been a long time coming. It's been about five years since we've had a franchise agreement in effect with them that would provide any capital money, and that's what that pass-through on the bill is going to be each month, is for the capital expenses that BATV's had. And basically, hopefully, we'll be able to build back up the reserves for capital expenses and take care of the capital expenses that we have for equipment and things that BATV needs.
No, I was under the impression you received that before.
We did, but...
But it's just been built recently.
The last five years, there's been no capital dispersions from Comcast.
Right, since we didn't have an agreement, right. I move that we approve Resolution 16-54-R, the franchise agreement between the city and Comcast of California, Colorado, Illinois, Indiana, and Michigan.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of Resolution 16-54-R for the re-execution of the franchise agreement for cable television with Comcast. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Atack?
Aye.
Star?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Euler?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusada?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Before we get off that subject, I just want to share with you, this past Friday, I was invited by the Batavia Chamber of Commerce to go out to Randall Road because New Uses and Close Mentor wanted to have a reopening of their ribbon cutting. And I had never quite been to one of those before where we reopened the previous ribbon cutting. And I got there, and they explained to me that they are overwhelmingly so pleased that Comcast Xfinity has moved in next to them, because what this has done is it's brought them a whole new customer base from throughout the southern part of Kane and Kendall County that didn't know that they, Close Mentor and New Uses were there. And now when they came to Xfinity's big showroom in Batavia, they suddenly found there was this, two neat businesses next door, and their businesses had a major spike upward because of this location of Xfinity in Batavia. So we're, I think we're very pleased that they're there. Obviously, they're bringing in a lot of customers into that center, and it's generating a lot of new business for some of our existing merchants. So I just thought I, as long as we're talking about Xfinity, I'd throw that out there so everybody could understand the impacts that, in kind of a different way, they're having on the retail world along Randall Road. So we're pleased to have them in Batavia, and may they have a long run with us. I guess there's thousands of cable boxes out there that need to be upgraded and replaced and repaired and redone, so I guess that's going to be there for quite a while, so, with plenty of customers and plenty of traffic in and out. All right, moving to item 14. I get to talk continually here. We're, as all of us know, we were saddened recently to be informed that our city clerk was going to be resigning ahead of the conclusion of her current term of office because she's moving back to Michigan to be near family and take a new employment opportunity. And she has done a truly outstanding job during her seven years that she has been here with us, and we are a better city council and a better recorded and preserved city council because of Heidi's good efforts. So on that behalf, on behalf of the members of the city council, I have a plaque, Heidi, to present to you. One of these you can hang on the wall. Says, "City of Batavia, Heidi Alwitzel, in appreciation of seven years of dedicated service to the citizens of Batavia as the elected city clerk, May 1st, 2009 through June 20th, 2016, and signed by myself as the mayor." And I give you this on thanks of the city council and myself for a truly outstanding job, and we wish you many, many good years ahead and future success in whatever endeavors you are about to embark on, so.
Thank you very much.
Want to make any comments to us?
Yes, actually, I do. I, when I first decided to run for council, it wasn't really a decision I made. Vic Deetz, former alderman, is my neighbor, and he came over and said, "The city clerk is retiring. You should put your government degree to Good Use." And he was right. But I came in not knowing what to expect at all. I mean, I'd studied government, but to actually be involved in it, I had all kinds of ideas about what would happen. What I didn't expect was a staff that was so kind and so generous and so supportive and just wanted me to succeed, so very, very helpful. What I didn't expect was a council that did the really, really hard work of getting along and treating each other with honor and dignity while you disagreed. I am a better person for having taken this position and for knowing every one of you, and Batavia's a great community for the work and the example that you set. And it includes you, Mr. Mayor, it starts at the top and goes down. Thank you.
We thank you for those kind words. Okay, moving to item number 16, committee reports, community development, or, excuse me, administrators first, Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, Mayor. First of all, we too, the staff, are really grateful for all the work that Heidi did. You know, there's a lot of interaction between, among various staff members and Heidi with contracts and minutes, et cetera, and you've always been great to work with, so we'll miss you. Our loss is Michigan's gain. We will be getting the Walk Your City presentation, we'll get that on the city website, and we'll post it, we'll post it on our Facebook site and make sure that it goes out with the e-blast this week. The next brush pickups, there's a brush pickup on the west side this week. If your brush wasn't out by this morning at 7 o'clock, you are tempting fate to try to put anything out as of now. The next brush pickup will be on July 11th for the east side, followed by August 8th. That Monday, your things need to be out there, please. The west side, the next brush pickups will be the weeks of July 18th and the week of August 15th. As many of you know, we had an accident on one of our detention ponds that we maintain on the west side near Iroquois Street. These things happen occasionally, and it's really an unfortunate, an unfortunate mix of the amount of algae that grows in a pond, along with temperature changes and with the chemicals that our vendor uses, all EPA-approved algicides. So as you may know, we had a pretty large fish kill last, starting last Friday. We've been out there removing, you know, dead fish. Some of our citizens removed fish that, if they could, and put, transferred them into other ponds. The water was not poisoned, nobody dumped anything into the pond. What happened was that too much of the algae died too quickly. You know, algae is, we don't like that in the ponds, our residents don't like it in the ponds. When algae are dying, they use a lot of oxygen. When they use the dissolved oxygen, the fish can't live. The algae is made of millions of microscopic plants that make our ponds have an appearance of pea soup. If we leave it untreated, the natural die-off would probably cause a fish kill in the fall. So many times when you do this, if there's an extreme change of temperature, you'll end up, the pond will do what they could say crash, meaning the oxygen levels decrease causing the fish kill. With the consistent warm temperatures we had here and the algae bloom, the oxygen levels in that pond got too low. The, we had our vendor go out and test. The ideal rate for this time of the year is between 5 to 7 milligrams per liter of oxygen, and here we have a 1.6 milligrams per liter. So as soon as the decaying process is complete, which should be in the next day or so, dissolved oxygen will begin increasing again, the pond will balance out, return to normal state. Because it is an oxygen issue, frogs, turtles, birds are not affected. We believe there are still live fish in the pond that will spawn and repopulate, but we'll be monitoring that situation. So it's a really bad thing, and I know people were really shocked. We are glad that at least it wasn't due to some, you know, unintentional dumping in the stormwater system or into the pond system, so. So that's the report on that. If you have any questions, please direct them to me, I'll get them to Scott, Paines, and the vendor. We met today with the engineering consultants regarding the riverbank erosion, and it looks like they'll most likely appear at next Tuesday's COW, that's June 28th. Originally, we thought that they were going to come in and concept, show two concepts, one a natural treatment and one somewhat more hard service and maybe a bit more permanently, permanent, but it looks like it's going to make more sense to talk about the different range of strategies that one has in treating different kinds of bank situations, such as extreme slopes, mild slopes, the availability of more property to work with a slope, the presence of utilities, trees, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that, that presentation is going to be more in terms of talking to you about the different kinds of tools in the tool belt, and then go through the reach of the river that's being studied and talk about the different strategies that might be used there. There are some, there are some areas that will be pretty, fairly reasonable to work with and others that will be very difficult to work with, and there are some long-term implications for some of the work that can be done. There's some real limitations, unfortunately, particularly here between Wilson Street Bridge and the pedestrian bridge. So that'll be, should be next Tuesday. The Gem Spa, if you recall, the Gem Spa is the massage establishment on Wilson Street. They are involved, or at least one of the employees is involved in the criminal justice process that's been continued till sometime in July. We have given notice to the business and the property owner of our intention to seek an injunction against any further use of the space. If we're successful, that space could actually be unavailable for rent for a year. It's a very complex issue. Obviously, we don't want to have any space in our commercial area empty, but this is very serious. We're not sure that we're being listened to with as much openness as we would like by building ownership. Kevin's working with their legal counsel right now, and we'll keep you up to date on what happens with that, that process. Let's see, the Blue Goose Project, I know you're all interested in that. Our consultants are waiting for information from the developer so they can continue or do their analysis. And lastly, the, I, and my wife actually got to attend the Blues on Water Street last we can really have some strategic partnerships with other cities in the region. The Blues on the Fox is a huge festival down in Aurora, and because the people who are involved in that wanted to kind of put some feelers out and really expand that, they were able to get one of the top players, in fact, one of the players who was at the Chicago Blues Festival the night before he played in Batavia. Kevin Drundle's very active in that, in that, that group of people, and it was, it was wonderful. There were a lot of people there who didn't know that that area existed. There were three venues, one was the dock, one was Kiss the Sky, and the other was Water Street Studios. It was made for a very impressive area of the community, so very successful, and I think we need to keep on doing those kinds of things. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions of Mr. McGrath?
Yes, I do have a question. I'd like to follow up on this item with Blue Goose and the documentation. Do we have an idea of what percentage of documents we're waiting on when this was first presented to us? Chris, I think you said at that time it was in the area of maybe sixty percent, maybe even a little bit more. I'm curious, what percentage of the documents are we waiting on for this process to go forward?
I, I wouldn't be able to answer that in terms of a percentage, but I know since the first set of documents that we've, we've received, none. So, all I can say is that I know that our, the basic documents that our consultants need to ordinarily, ordinarily do an analysis like this, we haven't received them yet. There's, they've had a meeting, we agreed that we would not take receipt of certain documents, that only our consultant would see them, the rest would be forthcoming, and that, they were supposed to be forthcoming about a week ago. So, the, our consultant has sent them a notice saying that, you know, we understand, they've been saying that they have some, like, some kind of August deadline or uncertain, and that that deadline is probably unrealistic now because of the lack of information. So, that's all I can say.
And I'm kind of surprised, because when we had this presentation with the consultant, and I don't recall exactly when that was, a month or so ago.
It was in May.
Yeah, it was the, my impression was, from what was told to us that night and, and leading up to that, that everybody was very anxious about getting all this material moved forward, and that we were well beyond fifty percent of the documents being available, but now, well, we're told that-
A couple of things that I reported first that came up. One is we have to have itemized this construction, and from that we can determine what are eligible for ten, ten percent. But beyond that, we need those accurate numbers, so we know the cost. And the revenue to the building, that's essentially the lease, the leases, and differentiation between existing lease revenue versus what would be posted development. The developer has indicated that he will allow our consultant to meet with them, that in the building, we're using leases, at least the terms, at least, they don't, they, they can't tell you that they have absolute lease in the lease yet, but at least the terms of leases. They don't want to send those out, for fear that they can sever the foyer at some point. I believe they're probably excluded from, but we wanted to go with that. So, our, our consultant will have, we need those instituted, you know, at the law. Those are the two critical elements that we're going to determine what the reasonable rates were terrible. We need to know the cost, we need to know the revenues. And it's, they had a really well articulated list of those items. It hasn't, they have not responded, I said, "Well, I'm reading that." They haven't responded, and we're actually waiting for the government to call tomorrow with our consultant to strategize how we can compile that information. Maybe it's just slow coming, but quite frankly, that's not there yet. Also, we didn't see plans, minimizing, like, the building. I don't know if there was any flying to, you know, if they know exactly what, what to do. We think once we get all the stuff in place, you can turn it around, they, that they can turn it around to work with us. So, it's not, it's not way off in the horizon to get product out, but without that initial information, from what you can do your analysis, it's hard.
Yeah, and for clarity's sake here, I'm not taking issue with staff or with the consultant. I'm curious, because we were, gentlemen from the developer were here in the room and expressed that this was something they were very anxious about. And in, by way of a bit of a follow-up, your update of the, of last week indicated that there's some issues with the Shumway property, a material from a previous project by the same developer that's still on site when, according to your note, this material was supposed to be removed some time ago. And I'm curious how it is that we're told certain things, but, and according to your, your update, these folks agreed to have this material removed. Looking at it over the weekend, it looks like as though it was freshly graded, or at least recently graded, and there's no intent to remove that material at all. I'm curious, is there an idea of where we're going to, to have them fulfill what they told us twice now on two different projects, that they were going to cooperate with us and do these things?
I don't know what to tell you. We, you know, we're just in the course of business, we send reminders, and, and I think Gary, particularly on the soil, has indicated some frustration because there is some Army Corps of Engineers involvement. Our next step, if we, you know, really don't have a meaningful conversation, is we'll issue a ticket and take it for zoning violation and take him to adjudication, which is really, you know, which is a very formal way of getting somebody to talk to you. That's all I can tell you. We're powerless.
No, again, I'm not, I'm not-
And so, we're, we're trying to do this. We, if you recall on the Blue Goose, we sent out a list of documents before we even retained elders, because we knew what the kinds of documents would be. So, I don't know, I can't, I just can't speak for the developer. I think it's a very complex project, and I think maybe they got going really fast. And then when they saw really the complexities of it compared, especially related to the kinds of money that they're asking for, it's taken them more time maybe to negotiate some leases or something. I, I don't know. I know we've, our, as I said, our consultant did write them to indicate that, you know, our biggest concern is that they've said that they're on some kind of time schedule, which we don't know. I mean, we, we know what you read in the papers, we haven't been told. But you went from that, we've, we've told him that this time period is in jeopardy because we don't think that you should, suddenly this thing is going to come like this in August, and you have to deal with talking about millions of dollars. You know, it's not a good scenario.
No. Okay, I, I guess I, I wanted to just follow up with those points, and my, my questions have nothing to do with, with staff's work on this. I understand it's, it's really more on the other side, but my concerns are also that, again, we were told certain things, and commitments were made and are being made, but there doesn't seem to be the follow-up that you would all like to see, I think.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports, community development, Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow evening at seven thirty, the Committee of the Whole is going to meet in this room. First item for the community development discussion is the inagovernmental agreement with North Roor for the properties on Heart Road. And that's all we have for that meeting. The next meeting for the Committee of the Whole will be June twenty-eighth. We have quite a few items on that agenda. Ordinance sixteen dash thirty-eight, sixteen dash thirty-nine regarding the park convergence for the Suncast Edition out on Suncast Lane. And then the conversation on the existing, the old Aldi building off of Wilson or Main Street and Randall Road, there's a business that's thinking about occupying that. And then, as the city administrator mentioned, the tentative river discussion on the protection of the banks, that'll be in front of us that evening. Plan Commission is not scheduled to meet Wednesday night, this coming Wednesday night at seven thirty. There is nothing on that agenda. And there is nothing on the historic preservation agenda for June twenty-seventh as of yet, but I will call for that meeting in case something comes up, and that is normally at five thirty. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Government Services, Alman Ajak.
Tomorrow night, we're going to have a street name discussion, South Drive to Hawks Drive, and talk about short-term home and room rentals. And ordinance sixteen dash thirty-seven for surplus property and the electric union agreement. And June twenty-eighth, we're going to have the Sicages two thousand and fifteen comprehensive financial report. And that's all I have.
City Services, Alman Wolf.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow night, the Committee of the Whole will have a continued discussion on contractor registrations.
Anybody have utilities in the absence of Alderman O'Brien? All right, do we have item seventeen, other business? Do we have any other business somebody wants to bring up? Okay, moving to the mayor's report. I just want to report on a couple of things that I got to participate in over the weekend. If you saw the Beacon News today, I'm on the front page giving a hug to Mazir Hamad, who is very involved in the Batavia Islamic Movement. And they had a ending of their FAST party over at the Batavia Congregational Church on Saturday night. Alderman Boderman was there with me. And I, it was the biggest one I've ever attended, that was, must have been almost several hundred people at that. And, you know, I thought it was most appropriate, given the, you know, kind of bad news that the world has had in the last few days, that Batavia came together in such a unified fashion of people of literally almost every faith in town there, and everybody sharing their sentiments of support for one another and understanding and compassion, and it went very, very well. So, I felt good to be part of a community that had that sentiment running through it. Also, over the weekend, I had the opportunity to have a conversation with one of the chief executives in the insurance industry who specifically is involved in fire insurance regulations for the state of Illinois, or has been, he's, is just recently retired. And he was telling me that this last few weeks, he had been called in to do a review of some fires that had occurred, and in the area, and their, their impacts on the insurance agency, or what their impacts could have been had they been handled differently. And one of the fires that he reviewed was the one that we experienced, I guess it was last year, out at the Candle Corporation of America. And I want to tell you, this gentleman was about as laudatory and complimentary toward the Batavia Fire Department and the actions that he read that they had undertaken there, and said that they, they couldn't have done it any better, and that they saved the day because that's over seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet of building space out there, and had that been handled the wrong way, we could have lost that whole building. But the Batavia Fire Department came in, knew what they were doing, they kept the sprinkler system running until they had that fire out, didn't shut it off, and they credit us with really knowing what we're doing as, as a fire department fighting challenging situations. So, I just wanted to share that with the council, that, that some very high-end people in the state of Illinois gave some very complimentary remarks to the Batavia Fire Department for how we fight fires. And so, I felt very proud of that conversation I had. So, we, we are on a good run here, we've had some nice things said, and as I say, certainly all the things that are unfolding in downtown this year, whether they be concerts or pageants or public demonstrations, or reach-outs, or car shows, or band concerts, or Flag Day celebrations, or whatever we're doing, we're getting really nice things said about us, and specifically how we keep so much of what we're doing right central to the downtown, right on the riverfront, and take advantage of the, of the values of the Fox River in our community. And, you know, I'm getting a lot of pats on the back, and, you know, not just for me, but for the council and everybody that's involved in all this stuff, that we're doing some really classy things that really make Batavia stand out as a nice place for people to live and visit and participate and socialize, and, you know, we're doing things the right way, and people feel welcome and safe, and are very thankful that we've turned the downtown central core of this community into something more than just a, a bridge where you pass from the east side to the west side or vice versa. So, to all of you on the council who have helped make some of these decisions that have led to, you know, River Street and the bridge, the pedestrian bridge, and the rebuilding of Houston Street, and all the other things that have kind of unfolded themselves in the last few years here, we're getting pretty strong rave reviews about a lot of what's going on. So, I thank you all for your support and cooperation and the willingness to work for the betterment of the community, because we are getting the compliments. So, I guess I'm done. I guess we need to move to nineteen, which is a motion for an executive session, and Mr. Balling is there in the front row, and he's going to give us the latest update on our search for a new city administrator to replace the retiring Bill McGrath at the end of July, and I think he's got good news for us. So, I entertain a motion for executive session.
Your Honor, do we, do we have anything for the purchase of real property also?
I don't know, do we have?
It's on the agenda.
We do.
We do?
We do.
Okay, well, let's put that-
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we adjourn to enter an executive session for the purpose of personnel and the purchase of real property.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Brown, second by Rusado, that we enter executive session for the purposes of discussion of personnel and the purchase of real property. Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Star?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Boderman?
Aye.